Prior to 2009.
So if that industry decides to do a major motion picture in another state or in another country when they could do it here, the city of LA would be losing not only employment of its residents, but literally millions of dollars as it relates to tax revenue and a variety of sources.
The concern over the loss of jobs and revenues is why city leaders recently adopted a resolution calling for the state legislature to extend the California film and television tax credit program due to expire in the 2014-2015 fiscal year. While the program offers producers a 20% to 25% tax credit towards qualified production costs, those in the film and television industry say that's just not enough.
About four years ago, the state finally came in with a tax incentive program of about $100 million. Very limited resources and limited number of productions that can apply for that film incentive. New York, for example, offers $420 million, more than four times what California does, and they have stolen a great deal of work from the state.
This year, 21 out of 23 new television dramas have left California to shoot elsewhere. Even looking at this year's Oscar nominees, Argo was the only film to shoot here.
This is a totally mobile industry. We have the infrastructure, we have the crews, we have the locations. What we don't have is the financial incentives to keep that work in California.
It will take a little more than rolling out the red carpet to keep productions from leaving. From Los Angeles, I'm Rasha Goel for LA This Week.
Now, while overall production figures in 2012 were down, on-location production in and around LA County actually saw an increase in 2012 compared to the previous year, thanks to the filming of sitcoms and commercials. A young man was shot and killed at a park late last summer while he sat on a park bench. Now, four months after his senseless murder, an improvement at the park that city leaders hope will prevent another similar tragedy from occurring there again. Six newly installed cameras offer a constant 360-degree view of South LA's Jackie Tatum Harvard Park at 1535 West 62nd Street, while these cameras, which can pan and record, had been in the works for quite some time as part of the park's overall improvement project. At Councilman Bernard Parks's urging, they were finally approved by the city council three days after 19-year-old Patrick Carruthers was shot at the park.
I'm glad that the cameras are up. My only remorse is that they weren't in place prior to my son's murder, and I hope that no one else experiences this tragedy.
Carruthers was at Harvard Park on Tuesday, September 25, 2012, sitting on a park bench listening to music in broad daylight, waiting to begin his shift as a volunteer for the city's Summer Night Lights Anti-Gang Program when a male suspect approached him and shot him multiple times in the back.
So he'll come in the morning and work with us, get in here at 7 o'clock. We finish the summer camp at 6:00. He'll take off his shirt and work from 7:00 to midnight for the SNL program, all day, just volunteering his time.
The case remains unsolved. The city is offering a $50,000 reward for information that leads to an arrest and conviction.
Use our parks. Enjoy the parks. Treasure the parks. Don't make these parks what they have become, and that's a place where people come and do undesirable things.
The head of the city's park system, John Kirk-Muckery, pleads with the community to help reclaim their parks, while law enforcement officials continue the work of finding the man who pulled the trigger to find justice for Patrick.
We're gonna place this in the park so people know forever that these cameras are in Patrick's honor.
Thank you.
If you have any information on this case, you are urged to call LAPD's 77th Criminal Gang Homicide Division at 213-485-1383. A heartfelt tribute here in Los Angeles for a facility that helped patients dying of AIDS at a time when those patients had nowhere else to go. Rasha Goel reports.
A crowd gathered for a sunset memorial ceremony at what used to be Chris Brownlee Hospice in Elysian Park. The facility cared for over 1,000 patients from 1988 to 1996 who were in the final stages of AIDS.
Let's bow our heads for one second, think of everybody we know that has passed through our life and has died from AIDS.
This was really a joyful place. This was really about living, more than it was about dying.
The 25-bed hospice was the first AIDS hospice in California. It was named in honor of AIDS activist and co-founder Chris Brownlee, who died from the disease a year after the hospice opened.
It's a very memorable place for a lot of people here that have had their last moments here spent with us, and it just means a lot to us employees.
I'm very pleased that it's closing because that tells us that this terrible disease is coming to a close, that we're able now to take care of those who are infected with HIV. Where back in 1990, it was truly a death sentence. There was no cure, there was no taking care of you.
After 1996, the building served as headquarters of AIDS Healthcare Foundation's Public Health Division, which transitioned from hospice care to an AIDS service organization.
The history behind Chris Brownlee, it gives me good, great joy to know that this is all happening for a great cause, and you know, it's bittersweet.
I'm Rasha Goel for LA This Week.
The building is now turned over to the city of Los Angeles. Meanwhile, the AIDS Healthcare Foundation's Public Health Division that took over the hospice in 1996 has relocated to another part of the city. It's a water reclamation plant that combines wastewater treatment with the earth-friendly beauty of a Japanese garden, and now the Donald C. Tillman Water Reclamation and Recycling Plant in the valley will get a new and much-needed addition. Anna Marcos takes us there.
For many years, the Japanese garden at the Tillman Water Reclamation Plant has provided scenic beauty and a place to contemplate, while the plant nearby has given Angelino's recycled water and a place to learn about water conservation and the environment.
One, two, three.
City leaders have broken ground on a new multipurpose building. It will be an educational center for the public, an administrative center for the staff, and headquarters for volunteer docents.
It's a building that's been needed for so long.
I promised myself and I promised the community, as long as I'm a councilman, before I stop being a councilman, we're gonna make sure that this project is committed, and we were able to do that just a few months ago.
This is the ceremonial hitwaters of the LA River. We supply a great deal of the water that goes in the LA River from this very facility.
This will be an earth-friendly building, meeting Gold Lead standards, one of the highest environmental ratings.
It'll be very energy efficient, it'll reuse water, it'll have the best lighting. There's a whole host of things that will be done in the building.
Finally, I've been a docent 15 years, and all 15 years we've been talking about when we have our own building with our gift shop in permanent headquarters and so on. This is wonderful.
The building is set to be completed in August of 2015. I'm Anna Marcos for LA This Week.
The Donald C. Tillman Water Reclamation Plant opened in 1984 and treats 80 million gallons of wastewater a day. The agency that oversees LAX is trying to get the word out to travelers about modernization efforts underway at the Bradley International Terminal, but as Yana Kay explains, city officials are questioning just how wisely money is being spent on this PR campaign.
Getting in and out of LAX can be a challenge for travelers, especially during construction, so airport officials want to keep people informed about what they can expect during the million-dollar Bradley Terminal makeover currently underway. Airport officials say the best way to spread the news is by hiring public relations agencies to help get the word out, but not everyone is on board with the plan. City officials want the airport to explain why it chose to award nearly $4 million in communications contracts to agencies outside of the city of Los Angeles instead of using local ones. The contracts were awarded to three agencies for three different purposes. One agency would handle public education, another would do media buys, and a third would handle video production. Councilmember Bill Rosendahl and others say every dollar spent needs to be scrutinized.
It's about transparency and openness and where I'm coming from. It's about using our money in a proper way so that regionalism happens.
Instead of hiring these outside agencies, opponents of the airport's $4 million public relations campaign say the money should be used to improve airport security, traffic flow, and to promote the smaller Ontario airport.
The fact that you could go to Ontario and you have a lot of deterioration there, the fact that it's not what it should be, the fact that you have more police officers at Burbank Airport per capita than you do at Ontario is really sickening.
For their part, council members say they're concerned that the contracts were decided by the Board of Airport Commissioners with no public input.
We selected the firms that we recommended the award to. It was on consent, as I said, because I think the board was comfortable with what we were doing.
Several companies that are based in the city of Los Angeles did make bids for the contracts, but did not get selected. Councilmembers plan to find out why. I'm Yana Kay for LA This Week.
Airport officials said that while two out of the three chosen companies aren't from Los Angeles, they are based in LA County. It's the kind of event LA city leaders welcome to L.A.'s Convention Center in the hopes of pumping much-needed dollars into the economy. This year, the L.A. Art Show hit town bigger and better than ever, drawing some 50,000 visitors from around the world. But who's looking at dollars? Let's look at art. Here's Anna Marcos.
If ever there was a place to see art on walls, this is where you want to do it. Once a year, the L.A. Art Show sets up house at the L.A. Convention Center, bringing thousands of pieces of art together: paintings, prints, posters, sculptures, even famous masterpieces, and all with an international twist.
There are 14 countries represented here at the L.A. Art Show, and what makes that very interesting is that you can come here and see the world's take on art today.
There's a modern and contemporary section, a historic section, an area with prints and maps from times as far back as Christopher Columbus, and a China fusion section where East and West collide.
You might see in this exhibition, you'll see something that looks very, very Asian-looking, but done in a Western technique.
$875,000 for this thing? It sounds like a lot, but not when you consider this is the work of famous artist John Chamberlain. You can actually get works of art here that cost anywhere from $500 to $1 million. So who would actually buy the stuff? We thought we'd find out.
I'm a regular old person who collects art and goes to a lot of shows of art.
Could you spend a million bucks?
No. I'm a picture framer. Sometimes I buy, other times I just go in to come and look, what is the new techniques.
I'm from San Diego, and I'm just here to enjoy the art, the aura of art.
I am a regular kid, but I like art also.
I'm actually a photographer, and I actually enjoy shooting the people that come to art shows.
Art can change the world. Art can change your lives.
Show organizers estimated as much as $50 million in creative goods changed hands during the five-day show, and all that art on gallery walls has now become art in someone's living room. I'm Anna Marcos for LA This Week.
The L.A. Art Show is owned by the Palm Beach Show Group out of Florida. And this next story is also about art. It's about how art can be integrated into a student's overall education at the L.A. Unified School District. Yana Kay tells us about the Arts Matter Campaign.
Recognize this man? He's Director George Lucas at 18 years old, and his photo is one of several others that's part of the Arts Matters Campaign being launched at the Los Angeles Unified School District.
It's important that we have initiatives like this, an initiative that will help to create professional development for arts programs, really provide a boost to getting teachers and schools and communities focused on the arts and what arts education can do.
The Arts Matters Campaign seeks to increase arts programs in L.A. schools through fundraising and public art exhibitions, as well as introducing kids to cultural facilities around the city. L.A. Mayor Antonio Villarosa joined school officials and others to present MTA bus ads promoting arts matters and to unveil childhood photos of great creative thinkers such as Tom Cruise, John Legend, James Cameron, and others to inspire kids to also think outside the box.
We also know from study after study that arts education enhances creativity, it engages students in a very unique way that fosters learning, it encourages collaboration, creative problem-solving, skills that are gonna be necessary to compete in this 21st-century economy.
The L.A. Fund for Public Education kicked off the Arts Matters Campaign last year to provide teacher training on how the arts can be integrated into the curriculum. The theme of the campaign is "Learn to Dream" and seeks to get as many people involved as possible to engage kids in art.
And what a beautiful gift we offer the students of L.A. today in asking them to be part of the energy of dreaming.
Officials are hoping this campaign will help students do exactly that: dream big and reach for the sky. I'm Yana Kay for LA This Week.
Artwork from the Arts Matter Campaign can be seen on 12 city buses, 175 billboards, and more than 270 additional pieces of public artwork. It was a tradition started four years ago when President Obama first took office, the National Day of Service. The day committed to volunteerism is meant to honor the life and legacy of Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Locally, one popular family destination benefited from the service of volunteers on this national Day of Service. This woman means business as she gets down on her knees to clean out trash from beneath this train, and this little girl is taking the job of dusting very seriously. They are just two of 50-some volunteers who descended upon the Travel Town Museum at Griffith Park to help spruce up the property and its trains.
I'm here to kinda give back. My son is up there, and he's seven, and I've been bringing him here since he was like two, and we always just had the best time walking in and out of the trains.
We get a lot of resources from the city, from the different locations that we have throughout the city, and just give a few hours of your time.
Volunteers cleaned, swept, and scrubbed the museum from top to bottom as part of President Obama's National Day of Service initiative.
This year, President Barack Obama, for his inauguration, had a whole website set up encouraging all Americans to go out and volunteer for a Day of Service. So I was able to register us on that website, and I immediately got 50 people signing up saying they were coming out.
The museum was still open to the public, so visitors that day were the lucky beneficiaries of a spick-and-span Travel Town Museum.
I think that the people who are here like it and stuff, and they wanna give back to it as a way of saying thank you, and that's what we are doing right now.
A Day of Service that serves to remind those, young and old, the value of an honest day's work. Mayor Villarosa applauds the bipartisan immigration proposal coming out of Washington. A boy shares his experience taking part in a mentoring program, and voters will decide the fate of the city's medical marijuana dispensaries. These stories and more in City Beat. The Los Angeles City Council has given final approval to placing a pair of initiatives on the May 21 ballot regulating medical marijuana dispensaries. One measure proposes limiting the number of dispensaries to around 100 in the city. The other measure would allow an unlimited number of dispensaries so long as their sales taxes are increased. The council has also given preliminary approval to a measure coming out of the city council that reduces the number of dispensaries in the city while also increasing the business tax on pot sales. Mayor Antonio Villarosa's calling the bipartisan immigration proposal unveiled by the U.S. Senate encouraging. In a written statement released by his office, the mayor says he believes legalization of one's residency status should be earned but not unattainable. The plan crafted by four Senate Democrats and four Senate Republicans prioritizes securing our nation's borders, but also allows for the estimated 11 million undocumented immigrants who live in the United States to qualify for permanent residency if they have no criminal background and if they can show a history of employment. LAN Airlines, which services South America, has temporarily suspended the operation of its three Boeing 787 aircraft in compliance with the recommendation of the Federal Aviation Administration. The FAA made the announcement after several incidents aboard Dreamliners, including reports of smoke on an All Nippon Airlines 787. The Los Angeles International Airport had recently celebrated LAN Airlines as the first carrier to offer international service on the Dreamliner at LAX. In fact, the LAN Dreamliner, which took off from LAX a few hours before the FAA announcement, remains grounded in Santiago. The L.A. City Council recognized January as National Mentoring Month and invited some special guests to council chambers, including a young boy and his mentor from Jewish Big Brothers and Big Sisters of Greater Los Angeles.
My mom was an immigrant from Russia, and we didn't have any family in this country. My mom was working hard to make our lives better, and she wanted me to have a positive role model in my life. She says that when she found Jewish Big Brothers and I started Sing Brayden, it was a miracle.
After earning his trust, we now have a solid friendship, and he is open to most of my advice, and even laughs at some of my jokes.
Three other mentoring groups were also represented in council during the special proclamation: The Big Brothers and Big Sisters of Greater Los Angeles, the Fulfillment Fund, and Catholic Big Brothers Big Sisters. L.A.'s top high school students are sharpening their wits in a sort of rehearsal for the upcoming LEDWP Science Bowl, which will then prepare them for that largest science bowl in the country, and Anna Marcos shows us the kind of metal and brains it takes to be a science champ.
There's not a football anywhere in this line of scrimmage. No, only brainiacs line up for the scrimmage at the 20th Annual LEDWP Science Bowl.
Give the specific scientific term for the day when the North Pole is tilted farthest on its axis towards the sun. Incorrect.
We all pick two subjects each, our primary and secondary, and we all spend time studying together, and we all like help each other out, even though we have our own individual subjects.
Think of it as a giant trivia quiz on the latest math, science, and technology know-how, but it's just practice for the actual LEDWP Science Bowl on February 23rd, when high school students from all over LA will compete for a chance to go on to the mother of all academic battles: the U.S. Department of Energy National Science Bowl in April. The U.S. government runs the competition in the hopes of creating tomorrow's science and technology geniuses.
In the beginning, it just sounded like fun, but over time, I realized by doing Science Bowl, I was learning more and more science.
It encourages even the top students to put in more study than they might not have done already. It also showcases their talent, it encourages students to participate and pursue courses in math, science, and technology so they would become engineers, scientists, people who work in computers in the future.
This year, L.A.'s wannabe science champs will compete against 13,000 of the nation's brightest future Einsteins. But not to worry, LEDWP Science Bowl students have won four national titles and placed in the top five 11 times in the competition.
What is the most abundant polysaccharide on Earth? B3.
Soluose.
Correct.
So these kids are hopeful, the championship streak continues. I'm Anna Marcos for LA This Week.
The LEDWP is one of only five utility companies nationwide that serve as regional coordinators and sponsors. And in this week's list of things to do, snow days at the L.A. Zoo, adopt a pet in honor of My Furry Valentine, and a pancake breakfast to benefit a good cause. Early weather reports predict a snowstorm at the Los Angeles Zoo and Botanical Gardens. Areas affected will be the habitats for the zoo's American black bear, Sumatran tigers, giant otters, harbor seals, and snow leopards. So mark the date on your calendar, Saturday and Sunday, February 9th and 10th, because the chilly conditions will only last throughout the weekend. The snow days at the zoo will go from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. both days. Don't miss this rare opportunity to view these creatures playing and exploring in a snowy winter wonderland. The L.A. Zoo is located at 5333 Zoo Drive. Go to LAZoo.org for details. Join Ride On Therapeutic Horsemanship for their annual Pancake Breakfast in Open House on Saturday, February 9th, from 9:00 a.m. to noon. This fun, free, family-friendly event will include demonstrations by Ride On's talented students, highlighting the programs that Ride On provides. Ride On offers therapeutic riding and hippotherapy, that's physical therapy on horseback, for children and adults with physical and intellectual disabilities. Ride On Therapeutic Horsemanship is located at 10860 Topanga Canyon Boulevard in Chatsworth. For more information, call 818-700-2971. And Valentine's Day is just around the corner, and the perfect gift for your sweetheart may just be a four-legged friend from one of the city's animal shelters. L.A. Animal Services is holding a My Furry Valentine Pet Adoption Event on Sunday, February 10th, from 11:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. at all of its animal shelters. You will receive a discount on pet adoption fees for adopting on that day. To find the shelter nearest you, go to LAAnimalServices.com. And that's a look at some upcoming things to do. That's going to do it for this edition. Thanks for joining us. I'm Ellen Chang. A reminder that you can catch us online at LACityview.org. You can also follow and like us on Facebook. We'll see you back here next week for more of LA This Week.
Hi, I'm Davey. Welcome to the Pacific Palisades, and you're watching Channel 35. It's our city and our channel. It's our city and our channel.
Today is Friday, February 8th. The City Council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 AM. We do not have a quorum as of yet, but I'd like to turn the floor over to Councilman Dennis Zine. If everybody could give Mr. Zine their full attention.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. President. I'm joined by family of Thomas Price. And we've announced a reward motion in the tragic hit-and-run of Thomas Price. December 2nd, 2012, just before Christmas, approximately 2:50 in the morning, 22-year-old Thomas Robert Price, while crossing the street, Reseda Boulevard in Bessemer in the San Fernando Valley, was struck by a vehicle, struck by a second vehicle, and succumbed to his injuries. First vehicle, 1997, 1998, dark green SUV with a possible four-to-five-inch lift kit, and a second as a compact passenger car. Investigators from Los Angeles Police Department Valley Traffic Division have run out of leads, and they've turned to the public and turned to the public to ask, please turn in information regarding this tragedy. This City Council has approved a $50,000 reward. That $50,000 reward is now posted for the apprehension conviction information related to this case. Thomas was a student, wanted to be a firefighter, wanted to follow in the footsteps of his relative to save people, to help people. And while he was crossing the street at 2:50 in the morning, he was struck by an SUV. The vehicle stopped, then continued, struck by a second vehicle that fled the scene, and he died, 22 years old. We're joined by his mother, his grandma, and some relatives, and I'll give them an opportunity for some comments. But the message is very clear. Two vehicles driven by individuals in the city of Los Angeles, San Fernando Valley, struck and killed a pedestrian simply crossing the roadway, a pedestrian that wanted to be a firefighter to help people. We need to bring closure and justice to this particular tragedy. Again, we have posted and thanked the council the approval of a $50,000 reward on this particular case. We have his mom, his grandma, and other relatives, and first, his mom will speak.
Thank you. My name is April Price. I am the single mother of my only child, Thomas Price. This is very disturbing to me and my family that two drivers struck my son, and neither one stopped. The first driver knew he had hit my son, stopped briefly enough to know he hit somebody, and then took off very fast, from what one witness statement had said, leaving my son in the street for a second car to run over him. My son worked part-time, helped me out. He was a full-time college student at Valley College where he was taking the fire tech program. He was going to finish this year in the fall. His grandfather was a retired fire captain of Ventura County. He not only wanted to do this because he was stepping into his grandfather's shoes, but because this was in his soul. My son wanted to do something that made a difference in life, that had meaning and purpose. He wanted to be there for someone at their worst possible time of their life, when they needed somebody the most. And those are my son's words from one of his own essays that he recently wrote in college. I'd like to read you a poem that was written for my son for his memorial on my behalf. These were words that I could not find at that time, and these were written for him. "What Do I Say When It's Too Hard to Say Goodbye?" A poem for Tommy Price, September 1990 to December 2nd, 2012. West Hills was blessed that autumn day my son was born. My arms were filled, so was my heart, with this bright new soul named Tom. He was my precious little one, then he became my friend. We played the cards that life dealt out, shared love that had no end. Light of my life, my best friend, my Tommy was to me. He was also a friend to all, the world, with his gift of gab and generosity. He talked to friends, to strangers too, he'd make them feel at home. The light would shine out from his eyes, and they would all feel less alone. We'd go to movies, he and I, to dinner, to concerts too. We'd laugh, we'd talk, we'd share comfort, love, as best friends often do. He liked homework and being in school. He loved studying history. His desire was to fight man's deadly fires with his life and his humanity. I had suffered setbacks here and there in life, and had some pain and cruelty, but Tommy always stayed close by my side and softened them for me. A mother's love is said to be the strongest love on earth. Nature has honored it through ages past. She has understood its worth. I hope Tom still knows his mother's love is boundless as the sea, and that if love alone could save him, he'd still be here with me. And though his body is no more, his soul lives in my heart. His smiling eyes, his loving ways will shield me from the dark. Thank you.
Hello, thank you, thank you for being here. My name is Sandy Price. I'm Grandma, otherwise known as Nonny to all of my grandchildren. Tommy was our first male grandchild, and he was the sweetest soul on earth. And like I told him before, I can stay here all day and tell you all the good things about Tommy, and some of them you wouldn't even believe, what a sweetheart he was. But I just want to please, please help us find these people who did this to him, because our life hasn't been the same. And we all miss him so much. Thank you, and God bless you.
Thank you. Good morning, Mr. President, honorable council members. Thank you for your support in approving this reward of $50,000. At this point in our investigation, we have run out of leads, and we're hopeful that this reward serves as an incentive, a monetary incentive for somebody to do the right thing, to provide us with the information that we need so that we can solve this case. Unfortunately, in this tragic collision, there is a video in that area that captured this tragic impact that occurred. What we're looking for is the other drivers who were following, who observed this tragic collision, to please call us. I know, we know that they saw what happened. We need that information that they have so that we can complete our investigation, but more importantly, for the family to have closure and begin the grieving process. So thank you very much for your support.
So, Mr. President, $50,000 reward. I want to acknowledge the council for approving the $50,000 reward. So anyone with information, please contact the Los Angeles Police Department. This family is grieving from this tragic death, an individual who wanted to be a firefighter to protect and to serve, tragically struck and killed by two vehicles that continued to drive down the street. So body shops, or anybody has information, please contact the police department. Again, a $50,000 reward. We want to acknowledge the family for coming forward and helping us, and hopefully, the community will come forward and help bring this case to a successful conclusion. And with that, Mr. President, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Zine, and to the family, our prayers are with you. And to the public, someone out there saw something. Please give us a call. Those of you that were actually driving the vehicle, your life will never be the same. You need to turn yourself in, help bring closure to this family. I don't have the words to articulate how sorry I am. All I can say to you is that I have a son that was involved in a hit-and-run accident, and he was able to jump. The car just flipped him over. He wound up with a few stitches. I could so easily be in your shoes, and we didn't find the person that did that because he didn't die. Please call, bring this family closure, and I am so sorry for your loss. May God give you strength. Thank you, Mr. Zine. Mr. Garcetti, can I ask you to approach the president's chair, please?
I'd like to recognize President Herb Wesson for our next presentation.
Thank you, Mr. President. Come on around here. Today is Dog Adoption Friday, and I have a special visitor with us today that's looking for a home, but I'm going to defer to you so that you can tell the story, how, and his name is Marty, how Marty was selected to be the dog put up for adoption today.
Okay, a few days ago, we're walking by, he was with a couple buddies, hanging out, and he was the first one to jump up, jumped towards me, and he just kept jumping like, "Pick me, pick me, pick me." And I knew he was the one to bring. He chose me to bring him here today. So he's happy to be here. He ran me through the parking lot and through City Hall, so he's definitely excited to be here, definitely excited.
Thank you. We have a 100% adoption rate where it relates to our dogs, so I anticipate that that rate will continue to be 100%. I purposely picked days like today when I know we're going to have a big crowd, because somebody's got to want to adopt this little fella. He is four years old, and what the... Here, I'll let you say that, because I'll be barred from television.
He's a Shih Tzu mix.
It wasn't me. It wasn't me. Anyway, he's four years old, ready to go, has all his shots, and he's looking for a home. And people, please remember, if we don't get these dogs adopted, then we have to put them to sleep. So you're not just getting a companion animal for yourself, you're saving a life. And if somebody sees this good-looking little boy, and they call, and he's already adopted, don't fret. We have shelters all over the city of Los Angeles with thousands of animals. So please, if you want Marty, you need to come and get him quick. What we're going to do, we're going to have him stay in the back until someone decides to give him a home. He's a wonderful dog.
I think we've got, we've got somebody who wants it?
Already.
We got a winner, Mr. Wesson. You have kept your winning streak alive. You've kept your winning streak alive. There's some great baseball players in the audience, but they don't have your batting average, Mr. President.
Mr. President, I used to be a car salesman before I got elected. I knew I was going to get this dog. Come here, dear, come here. Let's introduce yourself, since you're a new mother.
Hello, everybody. My name is Nancy Cortez, and I was looking for a dog, so this is perfect.
Let's give her a round of applause. Our 100% adoption rate still lives. So we'll just have you come in the back, and we'll fill out the paperwork. Congratulations.
Congratulations. And, Mr. President, congratulations on being chosen as the West Angeles Man of the Year last night as well.
No, thank you very much. Where's Sweet Lou? Sweet Lou? Sweet Lou? Sweet Lou, I thought you were going to adopt a dog.
I've got too many now.
Sweet Lou Dodger Great has too many now. All right, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. And we are awaiting our presentation shortly for African American Heritage Month. Are there any announcements folks would like to make from the horseshoe of upcoming events in your districts or any other news to share? Mr. Rosendahl.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Yesterday, I went before the Coastal Commission, which we've had good relationships and we've had confused relationships in the past. But I went there and I presented the zip line. The zip line was approved by the Coastal Commission. And by the time we get to Memorial Day weekend, we will have it up. And the monies we raised from that, the monies we raised from that will be used to keep the bathrooms open. So, the public-private partnership will work, Mr. President. Good news.
Congratulations to you, Mr. Rosendahl. Anyway, you hear the sound? We are ready to begin our African American Heritage History Month. Please welcome the Jazz Antigua and the great mayor of the city of Los Angeles and his guest, Let's give him another round of applause as we welcome our great mayor, accompanied by Councilmember Perry, to our chambers.
Thank you, Council President Wesson. It's great to be here with all of you and, you know, as we celebrate African American Heritage Month, it's great to see you, Mr. Wesson, as the president of this council.
Yes, it is.
And that group that we just heard from is called Jazz Antigua. Give them a big hand. Now, for all of you who are back here, whenever the mayor comes into the council chambers, he's got to thank them for allowing him to come. So, I want to thank our council members for allowing us to be here to celebrate African American Heritage Month, for welcoming us into these beautiful chambers. LeVar Burton said to me, as he was walking in, wow, I've never been here. And he used to be the honorary mayor of Sherman Oaks. So, it's nice to be in these chambers. Now, most of all, I want to thank Angelenos, who have filled these benches to celebrate with us today. Now, together, we're here to celebrate the rich heritage, the dynamic and vibrant heritage of African Americans in the city of Angels. And as Mr. Garcetti loves to say, in fact, we both say, when this city was first founded, way back when. There she is. Yes, she is. When this city was first founded by 44 settlers, 26 of the 44 settlers traced their heritage back to Africa. So, this town, yeah. And you know, they always talk about the last Mexican governor. Hopefully, there'll be another one. We ain't talking about that right now. But I'll say this. Well, I'll say this, the last Mexican governor, you ever seen his face? He traces his heritage back to Africa. Yeah. So, this is a community that's been a jewel in our city's crown. And this month, this jewel will shine for all of us to see. Now, it's been eight years now, everybody. It's my pleasure to kick off my last African American Heritage Month as mayor. And when you see the smile on my face, it's a smile that represents the pride at opening each and every year this month. And over the last eight years, we've showcased the rainbow of cultural riches that we enjoy as Angelenos. And some of you have heard me say this and some of you haven't, so I'm going to say it again. You know, last night I was, we were celebrating the 125th anniversary of the L.A. Chamber of Commerce. And they brought out the history of the chamber and the people who led the chamber. They all came from one part of the world. And I got up and I had said, what a beautiful thing that so many of them came from one part of the world. But what makes L.A. so different and what we celebrate today is that we come from every part of the world today. This is the city where the world comes together. 74% of this town comes from Latin America, Asia and Africa. 42% foreign-born. 140 nationalities, 220 languages. This really is a city that, as I say many times, doesn't care who your daddy is. In my case, they don't care that I didn't have one. And with Judge Walker's decision, they don't care that you have two of them. That's his town. And, yeah, that's right. And I don't have to tell you that what makes L.A. so special today is the diversity of this town. It's in our soul, it's in our hearts, it's in our DNA. And I want to thank and acknowledge the many people who have worked countless hours over the last eight years to make this Heritage Month and all the others such a resounding success. You know, we don't just do a party. If we were just doing a party, that would be nice. Let me tell you what we do. We have an essay contest. We have a poster contest. And we get kids from all over this town, kids who don't come from Africa to celebrate African American Heritage Month. And when you see one of them win the essay contest or the poster contest and come up and talk about the pride of, of what African Americans have done to this town and this country, it's a beautiful thing. But that happens for Latino Heritage Month, Asian American Pacific Islander Heritage Month, and all of the Heritage Month that we celebrate. And that's what makes this so important. So, each time we gather today to celebrate these months, we also celebrate the hope and promise of this town. The theme of today's event is to continue the dream. It's fitting, it's a fitting theme for this year in particular. Because as we look back on all that we've achieved together, I'm reminded of how the dreams of so many have been realized. In November, people came together across color, class and creed to reelect our country's first African American president. Many of you know I chaired the Democratic Party Convention, and I went all over this country, asking people to support his candidacy. And whenever, wherever I went, no matter who I spoke with, I talked about the defining moment for our country and for the American people. And that, that reelecting Barack Obama was about America becoming a better union, about America striving to be all that we've said we, we are when we first started out. And in President Obama's reelection, we saw the dream continue. And that same dream lives on here in L.A. When a newly opened family business helped lift loved ones out of poverty, the dream continues. When gang crime drops 40% in our community and 50% in Watts. And a young man can walk to school without fear of violence, the dream continues. When every child, no matter the color of their skin, has access to a quality education, the dream continues. Now, each and every day, we watch dreams continue and today's the day when we pause to reflect, when we take stock of how far we've come. Now, these dreams are the successes and triumphs of our ancestors and our brothers and sisters. And we're here to celebrate these dreams, but also to remember that we're still at the crossroads of freedom and equality. So much has been achieved, so much has changed, so much has been realized, but so much is still left to be done. Now, no single president can erase bigotry, no single community leader can eradicate poverty. But when we come together, as we have over the past eight years, we can take, take a collective step towards a better tomorrow. And that's exactly what we've done here in the city of Angels. And that's what we're going to continue to do. And so, this spirit and this message are embodied by today's distinguished honorees. LeVar Burton, who I first met when he was the honorary mayor of Sherman Oaks. And I said, there's only one mayor in this town. Danny Glover, who's here with us today, Al Al Kool-Jay, Tumalep, and the Kinsey family. Now, our first honoree is LeVar Burton. Now, LeVar is a man whose work has expanded our worldview. He's enriched the lives of our children and inspired our imaginations. That story tradition began at the tender age of 19 years old. It was then that LeVar, in the midst of his first professional audition, was cast in the groundbreaking miniseries Roots. You know, I remember being stuck to that TV because it was one of the few times that we talked about our history. When people ask me, why do we celebrate these months in the way that we do? Because they never talked about us in our history books back then. And the unparalleled success of that series launched his career and earned him his first Emmy nomination for Best Lead Actor in a Miniseries. In the, in the decades that followed, LeVar would go on to play iconic roles such as Lieutenant Commander Geordi La Forge in Star Trek. Get involved in the moment. His career would gather 10 Emmy Awards and five NAACP Awards. But awards and trailblazing roles are not LeVar's most remarkable achievement. That's because he's done so much to advance the cause of children's literacy. He served as the host and executive producer of PBS's Reading Rainbow for for 20 years, for 20 years. Now, during
26 years, Mr. Mayor. Look at me? That was in the Bible.
26 years. I like that. During that time, he inspired generations of young men and women, and maybe not so young men and women, but to read a book, share a story, and engage their imagination. Now, outside the small screen, he stood alongside former First Lady Laura Bush as the co-chair of PBS's Share a Story campaign to promote literacy. This is a man marked by dedication to the next generation, a man driven to give back to community, a man who inspires all of us. Please join me in presenting LeVar Burton with the Spirit of Los Angeles Award. Ladies and gentlemen, LeVar Burton.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I love you too. Thank you. I have lived in Los Angeles since 1974. I moved here from Sacramento, California, to go to school at the University of Southern California. After living here in this city for as long as I have, I do refer to Los Angeles as my hometown. I love L.A. Yeah. I absolutely do. Both of my children have been born here. I met and married my wife in this city. This city will always, yes. This city will always play an important role in the lives of the Burton family. And to receive the Spirit of Los Angeles Award from you, Mayor Villarosa, the next Hispanic governor of California
Let's see, I don't know.
Is, is, is a great honor. Thank you all very, very much. I appreciate you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Burton. And I just have one thing I, I've been wanting to say ever since I saw you in Roots. Grits, dummy. Mr. Mayor, that's one of the greatest lines ever.
That's why I love my, my, my leader, my president.
Jokes in the council chamber.
Oh, yeah.
It's hard for me to stand up.
It's all good, brother. Actor, producer, humanitarian. Danny Glover has been a commanding presence on the screen and stayed for more than 25 We're all familiar with his role as Sergeant Roger Murtagh in the blockbuster lethal weapon films. But he's equally known for his serious dramatic work as well. Who can forget his compelling performance in The Color Purple? You know, there's something about his quiet dignity. But when he walks in a room, he's got a gravitas that we all feel. And he brings that gravitas and that complexity to the diverse range of characters he plays. And he's been honored for his work with an Independent Spirit Award, an Image Award, Cable ACE Awards, and multiple Emmy nominations. But today, we're most excited to honor his community activism and his philanthropy. Some of you may know Danny comes from a family of activists and has carried his torch since his days at San Francisco State University. And over the years, he's focused his effort And over the years, he's focused his efforts on the notion of economic justice and increasing access to health care and education. He was a goodwill ambassador to the United Nations Development Program from 1998 to 2004, and currently serves as a UNICEF ambassador. Now, for entertaining and inspiring us all with his art, for working throughout his life to make the world a better place, for never, ever forgetting where he came from, please join me in presenting Danny Glover with the Dream of Los Angeles Award.
Good morning to all of you, Mayor, City Council, and all the guests that are here, especially Bonjour, mi esposa, mi esposa bonita, mi amor. My wife, Iliane. I want to go back just a moment, because more than 40 years ago, I worked in the city government for six and a half years in the Model Cities Program in the Office of Community Development. An extraordinary moment in what I call grassroots democracy, and expansion of the ideas of democracy happened in that moment. But before Lethal Weapon, my partner Mel Gibson and Richard Donner, before The Color Purple, Whoopi Goldberg, and Oprah and Steven Spielberg, before my great friend and brother Arnold Rifkin, how he guided my career, before all of that, I was here in L.A. And L.A., a space that provided this incredible, amazing kind of multi-ethnic theater community, whether it was the East-West Players, whether it was the Inner City Cultural Center, whether it was the Matrix Theater, all those spaces, all those spaces were available for me to grow. And it's important that the city continue to support that kind of theater, that kind of activism. My company that I formed with... Robey Theater with my childhood friend and also an actor, and the wonderful man Ben Gilley is celebrating its 20th anniversary next year. And that's our commitment, of commitment, of spirit of generosity that we think is necessary when we talk about theater. When we talk about art, as Ozzie Davis says, "We're going to need artists to save us from machines." We need to cultivate that art right here in those places, in those communities, as we see in those communities. And here, in African American Heritage Month, is a perfect way to recommit ourselves to that venture. I congratulate you, I congratulate you in accepting this honor, this honor on behalf of this great city, on behalf of its potential and the great moments that it has ahead as artists.
Some of us know him as a recording artist, others as an actor, still others as an author. I got one of his books on how to get a six-pack. I don't have one yet, so... He does. LL Cool J has been successful in every arena he's entered. Now, he first caught the attention of the music industry in the 1980s, won two Grammy Awards, and became the first rap artist to have 10 consecutive platinum-plus selling albums. How about that? And he's found equal success as an actor. He appeared in over 30 films, is currently starring in the hit television show NCIS: Los Angeles, and has received... Do that again. All right, thank you. And has received multiple Image Awards. And just as impressive is his advocacy for children. His efforts have focused on literacy for kids and arts in the schools. His charity Jump and Ball aims to give back to his childhood neighborhood in Queens, New York by offering an annual five-week program...
Somebody over here from Queens?
By offering an annual five-week program dedicated to bringing wholesome fun to young people. For his wide range of talents, for the excellence in everything he does, for his dedication to our kids, we honor LL Cool J with the Hope of Los Angeles Award.
I do have that book, yeah. I love that.
You know, while I was standing there, the word that kept ringing in my ear was gratitude. And I'm extremely grateful. You know, I am living proof that, you know, in this great country of ours, you can do anything you put your mind to. I'm living proof that dreams don't have deadlines. I'm also living proof that teamwork makes the dream work. You know, walking in these halls and just seeing the connection between government and community is a really special thing, because you, Mr. Mayor, and all of guests here, celebrating my heritage, makes me eager and excited about the opportunity to celebrate your heritage. And that is, I think, something that will make the fabric of our country that much stronger, that much greater. Because whether you're Latino, Italian, Irish, whatever you are, we're American. We're in this together.
That's right.
All right? So, I just want to say thank you very much. I appreciate you. I'd like to thank my special friends from CBS for coming down. You know, it's wonderful, Nina Tassler, George Schweitzer, David Pass. They're great people, and they've embraced me. And you guys, Angelenos, you have made Los Angeles a second home for me. And you've accepted me with open arms and still a New Yorker at heart. However, I accept this love and this blessing that you guys have given me, and I appreciate you very much. Thank you. And thank my manager.
Thank you. Let's give it up.
And I want you to know, LL Cool J was with me at Figaro Street Elementary, one of my partnership schools that you were there at. And everybody, I don't know, you might not have read about it, because reading positive things doesn't happen very much in this town, but I want to share something with you. These partnership schools that we took over seven years ago, Mr. Garcia, Ms. Perry, you've both visited them. In the last year, the number one, if we were a school district, the number one improved school district in California. I took over Jordan High School in Watts, and we said Watts is worth it. The number one improved high school in California. So, for all three of the individuals here, there's plenty of work to do around literacy and the arts in our schools, so thank you all very much. And now, I get an opportunity to recognize a family I've known for a long time. They've been with me through thick and thin. They're an iconic family in this town, the Kinsey family. Bernard, Shirley, and Khalil Kinsey. Now, today, their son Khalil is here to accept our award on their behalf. In addition to being leaders in the City of Los Angeles, the Kinseys are avid travelers. Over the course of their marriage, they've traveled to over 90 countries. During these travels, they've collected artifacts along the way. But when Khalil was in the third grade, 10 years ago... Their interest struck closer to home. Khalil was given a family history report, of which they were troubled by. That's because they couldn't go back any further than their great-great-grandparents. It's our history that does so much to define our present, and for the Kinseys, this was unacceptable. Thus began their quest to discover more about their family history and the collective history of African Americans. What began as a personal passion for discovery and knowledge has now become a collection that is being shared with millions. This collection has created a better narrative and dialogue on the African American experience. We thank them for their generosity to this city and to the world. We applaud them for their dedication to the arts that makes L.A. such a vibrant cultural hub. Today, we honor them. Ladies and gentlemen, Khalil Kinsey. That's outside? I'm doing it inside. Guess what? Khalil, say a few words.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. City Council members, it's an honor to stand in front of you today on behalf of my parents, Bernard and Shirley Kinsey. I have my cousin Cassandra Freeman here as well. My parents send their regrets and regards. We are opening an exhibit at the Museum of the African Diaspora in San Francisco tonight that will be on display there for the next three months. So, they are there getting that together. I will join them later. And most of you that do know my parents know that, one, they love Los Angeles, and, two, they are extremely passionate about sharing the stories of African American achievement and contribution in building this country, and the stories that are often untold, you know, in our schools. And we're doing our part to make sure that those stories do not go untold anymore. And it is an honor to be here in company of such distinguished guests. Actually, Mr. Burton, I was born in 1977, and when Roots came out. And that actually was a big... That was a...
You're old, man.
I'm trying to tell you something now. But that also was a huge impetus to what my parents started doing. And I just wanted to let you know that. So, thank you. When you get a chance, a special thank you to Council President Herb Weston and Albert Lord in sponsoring the Overbridge Display for African American Heritage Month that is here in the Overbridge. When you guys leave, please take a moment and stop through there. There are images from the Kinsey collection throughout the Overbridge. Thank you, and it was a pleasure working with you this past month.
Pleasure is mine. Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Before you continue, we've got a little extra special twist that we've added to today's celebration. So, if you could humor me for a minute, I'd like to call up Renata Simro with the L.A. Dodgers, share the mic for a moment with a young lady we're very proud of. Renata, good to see you.
Thank you, Council President Weston, the mayor. Thank you for this indulgence. We're joined this morning with three Dodger greats, Don Newcombe, Morwells, and Sweet Lou Johnson.
Dodger super greats.
And Mayor Villarosa, this is your eighth year doing this, and every year, you raise the bar in terms of the honorees that you bring into council that epitomize for us what Los Angeles is all about. So, I congratulate you on another great year of honorees. On April 15th of this year, as the Los Angeles Dodgers always do, we will again pay tribute to the life and legacy of Jackie Robinson, who stood defiantly against racial inequality and injustice. So, on behalf of the new ownership of the Los Angeles Dodgers, particularly our Los Angeles great Irvin Magic Johnson, we are extremely grateful to the mayor and to President Weston to have an opportunity to be able to present this morning's honoree and to give a contribution to the McKinsey collection on their work and commitment to continuing the dream, continuing the dream of freedom and equality. Your work, like Jackie's, will continue to inspire the next generation. So, congratulations, and go Dodgers.
Now, they're presenting our honorees with Dodger jerseys.
I gotta wear it. 42. See that number?
It'll fit one of your arms.
Oh, man. Oh, man. Oh, boy. Oh. Whoa.
That's New York.
You know what? Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Here you go.
This is in Vegas, right? What happens in Vegas?
We'll order him a larger jersey, Mr. Mayor. And Morwells, I'll tell you, you look so good. If anybody in here has a base, Morwells looks like he could steal, steal it. I mean, that's just how good, one of the best base stealers around, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, we're about to unveil a poster, a calendar, rather. But before we do, if there are anyone that want to say a few words, we can, and if not, I will...
No, they'll run me out. Ms. Perry?
Thank you very much, Mr. President, and to all the honorees, Mr. Burton, Mr. Glover, and Mr. Jay, who is wearing a Dodger jersey. Send that back to Queens. I'm just happy to stand here with the mayor and take a moment to talk about our shared history and how far we've come. And I measure progress by the words of my mother, who is 86 years old, and always thought she wouldn't live long enough to see an African American get elected president. And she has since had to amend her comment to say a second time. And she's still living and doing very well. But Los Angeles is a special place, a place where Central Avenue, the birthplace of West Coast jazz, and the place where African Americans like Billie Holiday and Louis Armstrong came to share their gifts with everyone. The story of the Dunbar Hotel, which is restored, nearly restored, and will soon open, where musicians stayed because they could not stay in other hotels because of the color of their skin. The Dunbar Hotel was the site of the first NAACP meeting. And down the street, the Paul Williams YMCA for Young Men of Color, designed by a preeminent African American architect who brought our city such iconic structures like the Los Angeles World Airport, also fully restored. We are also the birthplace of Ralph Bunch, who went on to earn a Nobel Peace Prize, the first African American and person of color to be so honored in the history of this prize. This is just some of our city's history. We are a city rich, very rich with history. And so, as we use this moment to lift each other up and to learn from our past and our present, so that the next generation of people who watch this, who hear this, will never forget our history, this is what makes our city so special. And as we celebrate these fine gentlemen here behind us who have made significant contributions to our heritage, LeVar Burton, who I have to say is an undergraduate at probably the best university, the best university in the City of Los Angeles, thank you. And Lil Abner, before he was selected to star in Roots, and that's just how far back we go. He's also an incredible dancer. Yes, yes, incredible. For all of the work that he has done to help children move their lives forward, and Mr. Jay, Mr. LL Cool J. Yeah, I've read the book on the six-pack too, but not for the same reason, okay?
You were looking at the pictures.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Okay? All right, I just have to say that.
We have fun over here, baby.
Yeah, 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 we're having a good time. We're having a good time.
It's a different city.
Yeah, it's different, yeah, it's different. And Mr. Glover, you are truly a humanitarian, and you have dazzled us with... And Mr. Glover, you are truly a humanitarian, and you have dazzled us with your on-screen performances. Give them all a hand. These honorees remind us of what we can achieve with dedication and with a steadfast focus in pursuing their chosen profession, and this should serve as an inspiration to all the young people who are wondering what passion means in your life. Their performances are woven into the fabric of our culture through their films, through their television, through their songs, and through their art. And thank you again to Khalil and to the entire Kinsey family for sharing not only their family's history, but taking it worldwide and using it as a teaching tool to teach all of our families about the ties that bind through books, through manuscripts, through artifacts that they have uncovered dating back to the 1600s to tell the African-American story, which is an American story. So, again, congratulations to all, and this is our shared history, which makes us one of the most unique and diverse cities in the world. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. City Attorney, Carmen Chertanich.
Mr. President, one merely has to look behind me and see the cultural richness that has been added to this city by the African-American community. Los Angeles is truly the most diverse city in the world. As LL Cool J said, this is a city where Italians, African-Americans, Latinos, even Croatians have an opportunity to get ahead. The seven Dodgers behind me. Even this converted net. In enduring ways have made Los Angeles and the culture of this nation a great place. I came here today to bring someone to your attention. LeVar?
Sir?
You played a role in the mini-series Roots. But you know, today, I am standing next to the great, 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 great granddaughter of Kunta Kunte himself. Ann Haley. Ann Haley. Ann Haley is just one of a plethora of African-American lawyers in this office mine that keep this city safe, defend our treasury, and protect the vulnerable every single day, and they do it in anonymity, and I'm very, very, very proud to be standing with you today. Is that a wow? Did I hear a wow?
That's a wow. I'm in shock, Carmen, gosh.
You know, and as we continue to work together, exactly what L.A. Cool J said, teamwork makes the dream work. Amen.
Mr. Council President.
Hey, Carmen, Mr. City Attorney.
Yes, sir.
He also said, "Mama said knock you out."
Mama did knock me out.
Hey, Mr. President, can I take a little privilege here for a second? Because I, too, remember a refrain and an image in Roots. And LL Cool J said to me, when he said, "When you honor me and my people and my community, I want to honor yours." And I remember when they tried to change Kunta Kunte's name to Toby, and he kept on saying, "My name is Kunta Kunte." And they said, "Your name is Toby." And you know, for a lot of us, they changed our names, you know, just because they could. And it was like, that's the way it is. And it was something that I never, ever forgot. We're proud of our heritage, and that's what today is all about, and thank you for being here with us as well. I want to real quickly mention our Author Study Club. You know, yes, it's true, kind of taking this to not just a day celebration, but a month's celebration, and really, you know, added some, you know, a little life and everything to it, made it citywide. But our Author Study Club started this in 1950. You know, this was a different town in 1950. I mean, first of all, we wouldn't be having this much fun in 1950, right? I mean, we just wouldn't. I mean, we're like, there's more authenticity in this room today than there probably was the 50 years before that. And there's a pride in who we are as a city. But I'll tell you something, I can only imagine what it was like talking about African-American History Month in 1950 in L.A., let's be honest. So, I want to acknowledge the Author Study Club and our folks who are here. Can you please stand for us? Because they've been here from the very, very beginning. We acknowledge them and thank them for never forgetting our history. And are we ready, or do you...
No. Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you very much.
It's gonna be, just hold on a little, how long, not long.
Thank you, and African-American History Day has turned a month, has turned to a year, hopefully, of us all celebrating. You laid out the history so well, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for what you've accomplished. This is our last chance for you as mayor to say thank you for elevating this up, and want to give you a round of applause. And our amazing Dodgers that are behind us, who inspire us every single day, who have been the Trailblazers, thank you as well to Maury, to Don, to Sweet Lou. We appreciate you and love you. And we remember in this city not just the celebratory moments, but we remember those days gone by, when pools would be drained after black children would swim in them, when entire areas of the city could not be lived in, when we had those moments of discrimination. Not only was it not more fun in the '50s and before, there were moments when these halls themselves would have been excluded to anybody to come into them like this. And this is an important day, not just for the city, but for our nation, because we have great African-American history in Los Angeles, the Biddy Masons of the world, who in the 19th century, she was one of the richest women anywhere in this city, who showed what could be done. Before Rosa Parks, with whom I share a birthday, in Northern California, there was a woman who got on the bus there years before and changed state law that made California a Trailblazer, so that we could not discriminate on our public transportation, long before that happened nationwide. And these pieces of history that we see and that we feel are still waiting for us to make every single day. And to our three honorees, I just want to congratulate them. You picked a great group. LL, ever since I saw you in Crush Groove, my life was changed. I begged my parents to get one of those boxes myself for my breakdance crew, and you have always just been a Trailblazer, and we could use you in the LAPD with the ways that you can prevent burglaries. So, we appreciate you that as well. LeVar Burton, I get to see your star at 7030 Hollywood Boulevard almost every week when I go by there, and you are a star right here, reflective not only what you do in front, but behind the camera as well, and we love you so much. And Danny Glover, who I first came to know from his work with Human Rights Watch, because if we were to pick a modern-day Paul Robeson, it would be you, somebody who not only, in the words of Paul Robeson, he says, "As an artist, I come to sing," and you certainly sing in your craft, "but as a citizen, I will always speak for peace, and no one can silence me." You have never not only not been silenced, you have spoken with such a clarion voice. You represent the very best of that tradition. So, congratulations to all three of our honorees, and one last... And I also wanted to thank one other person in the audience who's here, Rosalyn Brookings, who is the widow of Bishop H.H. Brookings, without whom we would not have had a Tom Bradley, is here, and we thank you and love you as well. So, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Buscagno.
Thank you, Mr. President. What a great day in the city of Los Angeles, and what a great way to kick off our African-American Heritage Month in our fine city. I want to thank the mayor for bringing these fine individuals before us and celebrating their accomplishments in the city of Los Angeles. To each and every one of you, your accomplishments and strides in the fields of philanthropy and astounding resonate what truly means to be leaders. And to LL Cool J, and I was with the mayor at Figaro Street in South Los Angeles to share the 2,000 Acts of Hope with AEG, and your commitment, community, we acknowledge you and celebrate you and thank you. We welcome LL Cool J to the Iowa last fall with NCIS. Los Angeles was filmed in San Pedro, and thank you for your work on the screen. I also like to take a moment to plug an important event taking place in Los Angeles next week. And, Mr. Glover, you definitely appreciate this as a well-respected activist. Next Friday, we'll be honoring Whitney Young's contribution to the civil rights movement by celebrating the new documentary film, The Power Broker, Whitney Young's Fight for Civil Rights. And just to let Mr. Burton know, PBS will be airing this documentary on February 18th, and the filmmaker Bonnie Boswell will be honored in council chambers next Friday. And we're coordinating screenings at middle school and high schools in my district, and on the 15th, there will be an evening screening and Q&amp;A session with Bonnie Boswell at the Grand Annex in San Pedro. And it's great also to see a great friend of mine, Maury Wills, the fastest Dodger alive. We thank you, Maury, we love you for all that you do. And in closing, I understand Sunday's Grammys, don't be surprised when they introduce L.A. Cool J come this Sunday with that jersey, all right? Will we, don't be surprised on Sunday's Grammys. Thank you, God bless you, we love you. Thank you.
Councilman Zine.
Thank you, Mr. President, and to our great mayor, the final chapter, where you have the honor of bringing communities together, as you've done so well over the years that we have worked together. I want to acknowledge the mayor for always being there to represent all the people of the city of Los Angeles, the mayor for all the people. Let's hear it for the mayor, Antonio Villarosa. And to our honorees, congratulations, Danny Glover. I was a member of the LAPD, and I always inspired to be like you when you played the cop. You know, you're always there, the fun shots, the good shots, God bless you for all that. And to all the other honorees, congratulations to that. The Dodgers, last night, there was an event, Baseballers Against Drugs, and the Dodgers were represented there. We have a city moving forward. When we look at the African-American Heritage Month calendar, a number of events that are taking place in the city, people need to participate in those events. They're open to the public. People need to understand that we're moving forward to make sure everyone has an opportunity. And the Kinsey Collection, we received this beginning of this week from the Kinsey family. And when you start looking through this, you look at the struggles, the struggles that the population that has been underrepresented for such a long period of time has made that accomplishment, and still many more accomplishments to go. But this is an incredible history, and I want to acknowledge the son, Bernard, and your mom Shirley Kinsey for putting this together and helping us. And I'm Lebanese, so, you know, we come from a faraway land on a boat over here, and here we are, the first Lebanese in the council. But the fact is, the struggles that many people have taken, this city offers an opportunity for all people. But to all of our population, the people that are here today, and all the others that think that they're forgotten, they're not forgotten. And this is a day of recollection and reflection, and this entire month dedicated, dedicated to the people of Los Angeles, for all people, the African-American Heritage Month, to understand the different activities, the many activities that people are invited to participate. But to all of you, you deserve it. LL, you're a big guy, LL. I mean, you're huge. Look at that. That doesn't fit you. But you know what? I'm a 48-long, so maybe, you know what I'm saying, brother? It'll work, okay? But to all of you, congratulations, mayor, congratulations. It's a time of reflection, a time of remembrance, a time of moving forward. But to all of you, congratulations, and we celebrate with all of you this great, great history that we have here in the city of Los Angeles. God bless you all. Thank you.
Let me step in, Mr. Zine, before you get yourself in trouble. Bill Rosendahl.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I was walking Venice Beach the other day, and people say, "Bill, Bill, look at them, look at them over there." And who's over there? The NCIS big shot, the great guy LL Cool Jr. And you were cool, and you grabbed me, and we did some photo ops, and we had a great moment. First of all, I love what you said about we're all in this together. You know, I'm an openly gay guy, and we're just finally getting recognition, being part of it all. And this heritage in this great city of the blender of the planet is the blender of all of humanity. And as you all said, America was founded on these principles. You can come from anywhere and make it in the United States of America, and we still believe that strongly, especially now, when we have an African-American president. We now have an African-American president of the council here as well.
Thank you, Bill. Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
God bless you all so much. Looking forward to working with you in the years ahead. Thank you.
Richard Alacón.
Members, there have been many words, but the one thing that I notice about this particular group is that each and every one of you has used your talent, not only to offer incredible acting benefits and athletic benefits to our community, but more importantly, to me, every single one of you has been a social justice activist, and that is so impressive. The three Dodgers, each of you has advanced the cause. I remember when I was 10-years-old and my family took a vacation to San Francisco, and it just happened to be a day of a civil rights march, and my whole life was baseball at that point. I hoped to have been a Dodger when I was 10-years-old. And in the front of this march was Jackie Robinson, and I'll never forget the image of him speaking, and then he went to the pulpit and spoke to the about 50,000 people who had gathered to fight for civil rights. And I never forgot the image of a guy who played baseball fighting for civil rights. And so, I want to commend each and every one of you for sharing in that spirit, because each and every one of you has done something to promote social justice in our community as well. So, God bless all of you.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, one last thing. We want to make your last African-American Heritage Month a memorable, a memorable one. If I could call on, and who would have thought, 30-plus years ago, when you turned on black entertainment television, and you saw, I think, Donnie Simpson as the DJ playing musical videos, that it would now become this gigantic network with over, seen in over 90 million households? The executive vice president, Martez Moore, come on up.
Thank you. Thank you, Council President Weston. I'd like to, first of all, this morning, say good morning to you, good morning to Mayor Villarosa, and also the city council members. You know, I come to you today not simply as an executive representing BET. I also come to you as someone that has been developed, nurtured, and mentored by a long list of politicians. So, I am a former Capitol Hill intern, former White House intern. I worked for Congressman Danny Davis of Chicago, and also Congressman Dip Gephardt of my hometown, St. Louis, Missouri. So, oh, no.
Come on, give Gephardt a mercy applause. Come on.
That's it. You know, in fact, my first employer was Rahm Emanuel, so that was my first job out of college in the Clinton administration. So, the thing that I really want to say is that I want to begin by thanking, you know, all the work that all the elected officials and the staff members do on a daily basis. It's often that you're not given the recognition, but I want to begin my remarks by saying that truly, our democracy stands on the big shoulders of every elected member and staffer in this room. So, thank you. I also wanted to give a congratulations to the honorees today, LeVar Burton, Danny Glover, LL Cool J, and the Kinsey family. I think it can honestly be said that each of these honorees stand as titans in the entertainment group, in the entertainment industry. In fact, you can even say that they represent the best of black entertainment. And also, entertainment within our country. So, today, I'd like to simply begin by actually having, you know, talking about three specific things. The first thing that I'd like to do is, I'd actually, on behalf of BET, I'd like to thank Council President Weston, Mayor Villarosa, and also the city council for 13 years. Villarosa, I'm sorry.
All right, you got it.
Seven years of Spanish, studying for As as opposed to studying for pronunciation is not a good strategy. So my apologies. But what I really wanted to do is first begin by thanking you for hosting BET for the past 12 years, when we actually come into your city the last weekend in June and host the BET Awards. So I want to thank you for extending an open hand and really embracing us every year that we've held our event in your hometown. You know, the second thing I wanted to say, and I think this is something that may not be obvious to some of the non-media professionals in the room, but the BET Awards, in fact, is truly the most, it's the crown jewel of BET Networks. So on an annual basis, roughly 5.5 million viewers tune in to watch the BET Awards show. And so for us, being able to host that show in the City of Angels is incredibly important. And so we thank you for opening your doors every year. So this year, we're actually doing something different around the BET Awards. We're actually expanding it into a three-day festival. And so what we're doing is, June 28th through 30th, is we are, we've partnered with AEG Entertainment to have a festival like the world has never seen. I think it can honestly be said that what we have in store is truly the greatest celebration of African-American entertainment and music that our country has ever seen. So we will have film festivals, we will have live concerts, we will have outdoor concerts, we will have seminars, we will have panelists from some of the best and brightest that the country has to offer. We expect roughly over 140,000 participants to actually enter into the downtown LA Live campus, where we will be completely taking it over from Friday to Sunday night, with the culmination of having the BET Awards Sunday night at the Nokia Theater. So the early economic estimates have forecasted that we anticipate between $40 to $50 million being generated by this event that's taking place the last weekend in June. And so my last, my third and last point that I wanted to share today with you all is that even though BET Networks is a top 15 cable network, and even though we've partnered with AEG Live, which is the biggest and the best live entertainment media company in the world, private enterprise can't do, can't pull off this venture alone. We need a truly, a public-private partnership. So there's a series of requests, very small requests, that we'll be making around, you know, select street closures during that weekend, so that we can actually bring the biggest and the best entertainment venue that the city has ever seen. And so we welcome to work with you, we welcome to see you the last weekend in June, and we welcome to have parties with you from sunup to sundown. I hope we all see you. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Now the unveiling. And while they're posing, Sister Haley, happy birthday. Happy birthday. And you didn't tell me who you were related to. You didn't tell me that. Ladies and gentlemen, let's give them all a round of applause. Danny, did you want to say something? Yes. If we could have quiet for a moment.
Council President and those engaged here, I forgot to mention, I have to mention that we have the Pan-African Film Festival this month as well. Ayuku Babu and I founded the Pan-African Film Festival 21 years ago. It is, it is a very important connection between the histories of African descendants and their connection to Africa, and all of our connection to Africa and filmmaking as well. So we want people to attend that this month. Also, a major benefit for Robey Theatre Company, the 24th of February this month. Thank you.
Mr. Clerk, we have a quorum. Could you please call the roll?
Alacón, Buscay, Englander, Garcetti, Weezer, Cresco, Corin, Lavonce, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Zine, Wesson, 10 members present in the quorum, Mr. President.
First order of business?
Approval of the minutes.
Perry moves, Zine seconds, next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Garcetti moves, Englander seconds, next.
Mr. President, before running through the agenda, a communication from the Arts, Parks, Health, and Aging Committee Chair for item two has been circulated and is now before council for consideration. It should be noted that a quorum of the committee did not consider this matter, and a public hearing was not satisfied in committee.
So without objection, that item is before us?
Before doing so, sir, item one is an item notice for a public hearing.
Do we have cards?
No, sir.
Members, specials? Specials? Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Next.
Mr. President, items two and three are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay, without objection, those items are now before us. I believe we have cards on number two. So on number two, if we could call, if we could please, shh, quiet, quiet, quiet. If we could please have Mr. Arnold Sachs and Dow House Dude on item two. Please come forward. Mr. Dude, you're right there on item two. You can, Mr. Dude, you're going to give up your time. You signed up. Go to the podium and speak. No, you go first.
You called Arnold Sachs first.
No, look, you're there. Speak.
Memorandum of agreement with the Friends of the Chinese-American Museum for operation of the Chinese-American Museum. We handed Carson number one also. Hey, let the Chinese have everything, because they already own the world anyway. Let them have their museum. Not a problem. You know, the United States can't even pay the interest on the money they own China. Hello? The Chinese own the world. They can have a museum.
Mr. Sachs.
Just thank you. Good morning, Arnold Sachs. By the way, today is National Prayer Day. Remember that for your agenda? You forgot to mention that. This proposed memorandum of agreement with the Friends of the Chinese-American Museum, this is a binding memorandum agreement, unlike the agreement you had with LA Live for the new stadium that was pushed by the ad hoc committee for the stadium, which was a non-binding MOU. And the technicalities between a non-binding MOU, or a memorandum of understanding, and a memorandum of agreement, would that be someplace that could be found in the city's archives? Although getting information from the city's archive is not necessarily the best place to look for information, I can vouch for that by looking for the title documents referring to the transfer of Ontario Airport to the city of LAX, to the city of Los Angeles, when the council members all claim that Ontario Airport is owned by Lawa. And that's a city of LA document. So I'm wondering, in referring to the MOU versus in memorandum of agreement, would that information differentiating between those two processes be found in some language that would be available online in LA's archives? Thank you for clarifying that, Ms. City Attorney, and Mr. President, and Deapers. Like, good thing I can only count to five, because I only see five council members here.
Okay, thank you. Let's.
Is in the audience.
Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Okay, Mr. Clerk, we're now going to vote for reconsideration of item one. We did have speakers on the queue. We're our cards from the public on item one. So this first vote is for reconsideration. If we could open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Okay, on item one, it was John Walsh, Arnold Sachs, and Dow House Dude.
And, Mr. President, for clarification on item number two, council did just adopt the communication from the Arts, Parks, Health, and Aging Committee Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Walsh.
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, or go to the front page online. This is concerning hearing protest, appeals or objections concerning nuisance, noncompliance of code violations, annual inspections. This is a, you actually do a fairly good job on this, and excellent job. I'd like to thank you, and I'd like to thank you for this whole meeting, except for the mayor rudely interrupting the BET president to the correct pronunciation of his name, which was racist.
Just thank you. Good morning again, Arnold Sachs. I was reading this morning at breakfast, today's Daily Breeze. It mentioned budget analyst warns LA could lose 500 officers. Further mentions that Measure A, this income, this tax increase that the Harvey Wesson is pushing, will raise $215 million. And so I'm wondering, these monies that are collected from these nuisance abasement costs probably end up in a general fund. So you took the time last year, maybe it was even the year before that, to discuss and debate the pleasures of making the evil banks pay for $1,000 a day for upkeep for nuisance homes in the city of LA. $1,000 a day. If you had 100 homes in the city of LA...
Next.
Mr. President, items two and three are items for which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration.
Okay, without objection, those items are now before us. I believe we have cards on number two. So on number two, if we could call, if we could please, shhh, quiet, quiet, quiet. If we could please have Mr. Arnold Sachs and Dow House Dude on item two. Please come forward. Mr. Dude, you're right there on item two, you can, uh... Mr. Dude, you're gonna give up your time, you signed up, go to the podium and speak. No, you go first.
You called Arnold Sachs first!
No, look, you're there, speak.
Memorandum of agreement with the Friends of the Chinese American Museum for operation of the Chinese American Museum. We handed Carson number one also. Hey, let the Chinese have everything, 'cause they already own the world anyway. Let them have their museum, not a problem, you know? The United States can't even pay the interest on the money they own China. Hello? The Chinese own the world. They can have a museum.
Mr. Sachs.
Just thank you, good morning, Arnold Sachs. By the way, today is National Prayer Day, remember that for your agenda? You forgot to mention that. Um, this proposed memorandum of agreement with the Friends of the Chinese American Museum... This is a binding memorandum agreement, unlike the agreement you had with L.A. Live for the new stadium that was pushed by the ad hoc committee for the stadium, which was a non-binding MOU. And the technicalities between a non-binding MOU, or a memorandum of understanding, and a memorandum of agreement, would that be someplace that could be found in the city's archives? Although getting information from the city's archive is not necessarily the best place to look for information, I can vouch for that by looking for the title documents referring to the transfer of Ontario Airport to the city of LAX, to the city of Los Angeles, when the council members all claim that Ontario Airport is owned by Lawa. And that's a city of L.A. document. So I'm wondering, in referring to the MOU versus in memorandum of agreement, would that information differentiating between those two processes be found in some language that would be available online in L.A.'s archives? Thank you for clarifying that, Ms. City Attorney, and Mr. President, and, um, keepers. Like, good thing I can only count to five, 'cause I only see five council members here.
Okay, thank you. Let's, uh...
Is in the audience.
Let's, uh, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Okay, Mr. Clerk, we're now gonna vote for reconsideration of, uh, item one. We did have speakers on the queue, where are cards from the public on item one. So this first vote is for reconsideration. If we could open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote?
Ten ayes.
Okay, on item one, it was John Walsh, uh, Arnold Sachs, and Dow House Dude.
And, Mr. President, for clarification on item number two, council did just adopt the communication from the Arts, Parks, Health and Aging Committee Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Walsh.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, or go to the front page online. This is concerning hearing protest, appeals or objections, concerning nuisance, noncompliance of code violations, annual inspections. Uh, this is, uh, you actually do a fairly good job on this, and excellent job. I'd like to thank you, and I'd like to thank you for this whole meeting, except for the mayor rudely interrupting the BET president to the correct pronunciation of his name, which was racist.
Yes, thank you, good morning again, Arnold Sachs. Um, I was reading this morning at breakfast, today's Daily Breeze, it mentioned budget analyst warns L.A. could lose 500 officers. Further mentions that, uh, Measure A, this income, this tax increase that the Harvey Weston is pushing, will raise $215 million. And so I'm wondering, these monies that are collected from these nuisance abatement costs probably end up in a general fund? So you took the time last year, maybe it was even the year before that, to discuss and debate the pleasures of making the evil banks pay for $1,000 a day for upkeep for nuisance homes in the city of L.A.? $1,000 a day. If you had 100 homes in the city of L.A. spending $1,000 a day, that'd be $10,000. Times one month, that'd be $3 million for the general fund. So I'm thinking, here, nuisance abatement cost, $10,000. Bank cleanup funds for neglected foreclosed homes, $3 million. Hmm, I don't know, maybe it's because I'm not a councilman that I don't see the difference in that math, but I'm still waiting to see a list of homes that you have gathering $1,000 a day from for cleaning up foreclosed properties that have gone into neglect sometime.
Thank you. Next speaker, Dow House?
Uh, I think you left your agenda, Mr. Sachs, right there. Can you roll back my time, please? Well, you don't need to, 'cause you know how I feel. The real estate system that you're running is totally wrong. It's dedicated to driving everybody homeless. All these building safety, look, a lien for $3,400 some dollars to people that don't have the money, another lien for $1,100. You go around collecting money from everybody, even when you don't even deserve it, you know, because you're not fixing the streets, you're not cleaning up the garbage, you're not really getting anything done around the city, but you keep collecting and collecting and collecting and finding new ways to collect. And that is totally wrong. You have to leave the people free. You have to liberate everybody so everybody can think freely and create a better city, a better world, a better, et cetera, et cetera. You are not letting us think by keeping us all suppressed with the idea that we're gonna lose our house. That is ridiculous, is totally inhumane. Even penguins are smarter than us.
Okay, no more cards on this item. See no one on the queue, let's open the roll and close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Next item?
Mr. President, that brings us to item number three, called special for cards.
Okay. Mr. Sachs, come on up. John Walsh. Mr. Sachs, you got one minute left?
Thank you, good afternoon, good morning. We'll be out of here by lunch, that's great. Again, an opportunity to add funding to the general fund. I know, we should go after the nickels and dimes, 'cause we probably have a lot of nickel and dime wrappers that we could use to roll up the coins before we send them to the bank, instead of going after those crisp $1,000 bills that you would be getting, and you'd be helping to clean up the neighborhoods. Absolutely, it makes no sense, but the good news is, we're up to seven council members as we speak, which is short, ten, three short of the quorum, but closer.
Thank you very much, John Walsh.
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, check out our endorsements, anybody but Garcetti for Mayor Committee for identification purposes only. This is, again, this was a brainchild, and I say that positively, of Jackie Goldberg. Uh, we did get rid of her through term limits, but this REAP project started with Jackie Goldberg. Uh, it's, Garcetti had absolutely nothing to do with it. Uh, you're doing a good job with REAP, stay tuned, 'cause what I'm about to say in public comment is gonna rock the building.
Okay, Dow House Dude?
Uh, Mr. Corretz, you're overeating, it's not good for your blood sugar. You're eating cake. Anyway, Mr. Garcetti, if you're really for housing, I'll vote for you, okay? But I don't think you know how to do it, you're gonna have to consult me, all right? I don't think any of you really realize what you're doing to the people, so here we are, collecting more money, escrow accounts, the city has a right to overrule the people, no you don't. The people are the government, you're only the administration of the people's money. Without our taxes, you cannot function. So don't even think you're government, you're only the administration of the people's money. Keep that in mind, Garcetti, when you get elected, 'cause you will get elected.
Okay, no more cards on this item. See no speakers on the queue, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Okay, next item?
Mr. President, that takes council to general public comment.
Okay, public comment, we have with us, uh, Candido, come on up.
Good morning, Mr. President, council members. With me is, uh, John...
Jeff Cooney.
Jeff Cooney and, uh, John, uh, Camara. First of all, I would like to wish everybody a happy and healthy African-American Heritage Month, and it was nice that you were honoring, um, celebrities, movie stars, but how about the wonderful and dedicated African-American city employees, the educators, uh, the people that make this city run, and that's who we should be honoring, all of the great people out there who are doing great things for us. Uh, I would also like to thank the NAACP, Mr. Jeers, and Mr. Herb Thompson from the Valley, who helped me out in a situation, uh, even though I'm not African-American, the NAACP stood by me and I appreciate their kindness. Uh, Mr. Bergosa, he's left, but he, he said something that struck, uh, some chords with me, and he called this "this town", and there's a song that we're working on, Mr. President, for the Dodgers, and it goes like this, if I may. "The city of today is the city of L.A. Come winter, spring, or fall, this city's got it all. From its mountains to its sea, this town's made for you and me. White, yellow, black, or brown, this is L.A., everybody's town. L.A.'s the town where the stars are bound, Rolls Royces and caviar, every one of us think we're superstars. New York, Detroit, Chicago, they all have that glow, but L.A.'s the town where Jackie Robinson was found, where Newcomb, Johnson, and where Maury Wills all stood on our mounds, 'cause this is L.A. Dodger town. So bring those dreams and fantasies to this town of make-believe, 'cause this is L.A., my town. This is L.A., your town. This is L.A., Mr. President, Dodger town. This is L.A., everybody's town." Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Candido, thank you for your good heart. Uh, well, this is, uh, Bob Cooper?
Yes, how are you, gentlemen? As you know, my name is Bob Cooper. I'm still trying to get into my bank accounts in my office through all the slanders and allegations, et cetera. I'd appreciate it if you tell some of these people, please, let me get in my office and get on with my business, I'm losing thousands of dollars a day. I was working on two television shows when your police officers took over my business, shut the power off, and locked me out of my business, closed my bank accounts, as I stated when I went down to Bank of America to get my statements. Eight police officers showed up, you got more than 70 involved, allowing the defendants that I named in the identity theft to stalk me like an animal. Their cars are all parked down on Central. Next thing I know, big truck is pulling up, full of DVD players, pizzas and stuff. What is that? All to victimize me. That's not right. No, I'll be here, down here in City Hall every week, or every other week when you be in touch, until someone hears me. I don't like coming down here. I don't like calling out names to people, and I don't call you people's names, but you all know what you are, you know. You know, and you know that I know. I've investigated you for more than 20 years, especially Mr. Parks there, took $14,000 gold card from me and was riding around with his social friends, grinning about it, projects that they stole. Chevron additive that's running in the Chevron gas stations, that was added to the fuel, nine, what is it, nine, 10 years ago. Please, you get some type of official to let me in my office, unlock my bank accounts. There's no threat, just wait and see.
Okay, next speaker is, uh, Dow House, come on up, and then Michael Caddion.
Hey, oh, one second for Mr. Rossendahl. Uh, Mr. Corretz, this public comment's gonna be a piece of cake, if you get the meaning. Anyway, um, a piece of cake, 'cause look at how much you dedicate to entertainment. Is that what we need, more entertainment? I mean, I live, I don't live with the guy, but Dodger Dave has worked in this city, he, he came with the Brooklyn Dodgers, and he knows all these people that are, we just, he knows all of them. And guess what? A few months ago, the city said, "You owe us $1,600, and we're gonna sell your house from under you." And when he spoke to Krikorian, the guy that he helped get elected, 'cause he worked like a dog helping him, Krikorian said, "Just pay your bill, you idiot." That's what he told him. Even though the bill was not right, was not correct, it was never investigated, and the guy almost lost the house that he's worked for all his life. What an idiotic system. What a stupid system we're running. And you are all accomplices to it, because nobody's doing anything. Mr. Alarcon, I saw you on TV the other day talking about housing for people that are no longer available mentally. We need that, we need all types of housing, we need a system where nobody can lose their home for any reason. Put that in your brain, everybody. Put it in your brain, we need a better system. We can change it.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Thank you. Couple of weeks ago, I think it was Mr. Krikorian who brought up gun control, and he stated that he was going to, uh, put in new legislation, or whatever he was gonna do about gun control. And as normal, and I'm talking to the chair, so maybe the chair would understand this, get it through his head, I'm talking to the chair, and to the city council, not to any one individual, but I am mentioning the individual. Mr. Krikorian, once again, is not paying attention. He's carrying on a conversation. Then, when certain comments get brought up, he gets upset, and he wants to clock somebody. Maybe if he paid attention, he wouldn't have to clock somebody. But let's go back to the gun control. Who's out there shooting people now? An LAPD officer. But the gun control that you're talking about doesn't include them. Maybe it should. Let's talk about the white elephant in the room, okay? Other officers shot two poor ladies delivering newspapers. Says you can walk down a street and watch, the mayor said, but if you're two ladies delivering newspapers, you can't deliver newspapers, 'cause you'll get shot down. If anybody here has guts, that is Mr. Alarcon who's not paying attention, Buscagno's not paying attention, Ellinger, whatever his name is, not paying attention, Mr. Krikorian's not paying attention. Hi, Zine, you finally turned around fast, that was good, I liked that one. The point being, is get a backbone. Ask Charles Beck to quit, resign. His policy of shoot first and ask questions later almost cost two people their lives. But what it's gonna end up costing? This city, their pocketbook. 'Cause you are gonna get your butt sued off, big time. What threat did they make to him? What threat did these ladies make to these officers?
Thank you very much. Our next speaker, Dr. Tom Williams. Tom Williams, are you here? Dr. Tom Williams? I don't see him. How about Arnold Sachs, come on up?
Thank you, good afternoon. A, um, clarification, now it's Councilman Corretz who's sucking down cake like it's going out of style. That being said, um, and not to pick on you, Councilman Alarcon, but a couple of weeks ago, you had a presentation here for earned income tax credit, and so I brought forth, because this just occurred on the February 5th at the county. The county and the Los Angeles Unified School District will get together and expand school health centers and wellness centers. So I thought, earned income tax credit, I'd ask them there. The city says it's a billion dollars that you're leaving on the table. Billion dollars. Put that in the economy, a billion dollars, would that do anything? So why not? If the county can get in contact with the LAUSD for this health center wellness item on their agenda, why can't the city council get in touch with the LAUSD about earned income tax credit for poor families? Seems like it would be a perfect match. No, we're not doing that, that being said. There's also a discussion regarding LAX, couple of people are concerned about contracts. So here's an item on the agenda, um, to be considered, that the city will be spending money at Ontario Airport to repair some loading trucks for loading planes. But Ontario Airport belongs to Lawa, or so we're told. So why is the city of L.A. being billed or paying money to spend money to repair some vehicles that are used to load passengers on planes at Ontario Airport? Isn't that a contract worth looking into? City doesn't own it. Ontario Airport is owned by Lawa, although the title was transferred from Lawa.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker, John Walsh, then Penny Hill.
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, go right now and see our endorsements. I'd like to issue right now a challenge, Herb Weston, and a challenge to Miguel Santana, the CEO of the city, and what I want to do is have a cyber debate on Prop A. You're asking us on HollywoodHighlands.org. We offer you 500 words on our website, you, we will answer you with 500 words. We are against this tax, vote against it. It is a tax forever. They say it's gonna pay for the cops and the fire department for the next few years, one half percent. I voted for Prop 30, I voted for Brown's tax. It was only one quarter of a percent, and it was for just five years. I'm saying to everybody out here, vote no on Prop A. The way to get back at these people is not insult them, the way to get back at these arrogant people is to poison their wells, and their wells, where the tax money comes from, they're digging now. We can defeat them. Incidentally, I have never seen such racism. Here is the BET president speaking, and he makes a slight mistake in the way he pronounces Mr. Villarreal's name, which is an invented name, his name is Antonio Villar, Villar, not Villarreal, that's his ex-wife, who says he's a piece of you-know-what. He was publicly humiliated and asked to apologize, and I want to say to every black person out there, that gives you an idea of what the mayor is like. And incidentally, I've been coming to this council for about 20 years. The musicians here were forced, they turned the men's bathroom downstairs into the green room, the black musicians were forced to undress and dress in a toilet. That has never happened before. The sign is down there. These are racist garbage, and only a white man can tell you this, I know more about racism than a black person, because we...
Next speaker is Penny Hill. Penny Hill, are you here? Penny Hill? Penny. Okay, Penny.
Uh, hello, Mr. President of, uh, the...
Hello, I'm Mr. President of the city council and all the city council members. I say, praise the Lord, black Jesus is coming soon. And when he comes, his people, the sons of God, I will recognize him, other people won't. And so, we need to get our lives together so that we have clear vision to see Jesus. The reason I came today is because I wanted to get some information, for one thing, about the city of Los Angeles taking over the parks in Skid Row. And I was looking here for Mr. Huzar. I believe that he's a councilman for the 14th district, which is Skid Row. Or Ms. Jan Perry was the councilwoman there, but she's evidently not there anymore. Is there anybody that could tell me anything about the practices of the parks and recreation? Who is the one that does the hiring? What is going on there right now? There is a single-room occupancy, seemed to own the two parks that I'm aware of, which one is Gladys Park, the other one is San Julian Park. But what I'm upset about, mainly, I have a friend, and he is a friend to all in the community and to everyone who cares about Los Angeles. His name is Gary Lett. And there's another person named Danielle that I don't know very well. But what I'm trying to say is, Gary Lett dedicated 25 years of his life to working at this park. He is a friend to everyone. He is a man that because of his position, a park director, got to know families and their children through the 25 years that he's worked there. But this SRO, but you can't just let people, take people out of their job that has their heart and put them in someplace else when you don't even, you know what I'm saying? The city of Los Angeles shouldn't have done that. That man is vital. He's a vital.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you very much. Okay, I believe that does take care of all of our public comment cards. Mr. Clerk?
Mr. President, we do have a special one that has been circulated. It is a special one. I believe the maker of the motion will speak to the findings.
Okay, Councilman Corretts?
Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of Councilmember Krikorian, I'd like to make this motion on a problem building in this district. It's an eight-unit apartment building located at 5820 Tohunga Avenue in North Hollywood. And although the tenants have been consistently paying their rent, the representative of the owner has been refusing to pay the water bill for a long period of time. A DWP has been in negotiations with this owner since July 2011 for payment of the water bill. However, all the efforts failed, and the department was forced to terminate service and remove the meter. Since this violation affects the health and safety of the occupants, it is resulting in a deprivation of housing services and a habitability violation, and so immediate action is needed to provide relief. So using this Rule 23, this building would be put in to reap, and that would allow them to turn back on their water, which they've been without for 11 days. And so I would move that we do that and we have the DWP requested to immediately restore water service to this location.
Okay, so the next vote will be on the findings. Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
So we do have one speaker card on this item, John Walsh.
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, front page online. Go to Ron KLA, go to Joseph Maylander, go to Mayor Sam for an expansion of remarks. Now, the reason I'm speaking now is because they added, they snuck, sneaked this one on. But however, usually, it's a dirty deal, but here, it's a good point, because people have their water turned off, so Mr. Corretts was right. But remember, the meeting is never over, because they can sneak these special ones, special twos in. HollywoodHighlands.org, let's get the bad landlords.
Mr. Corretts, you still want to speak? We're okay? All right.
Just ask everyone for an eye vote.
Okay, so let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
All right, that does take care of special one.
Mr. President, council has motions for posting and referral.
Posted and referred?
The desk is clear.
Members, any announcements? Any announcements? Councilman Zine?
Is, on Saturday, the cat and dog free spay and neuter clinic, that is free, Caesar Milan will be attending, and I've been invited to that event. And that is going to be at the Felician Boys and Girls Club at 3218 Wabash Avenue. That's in your district, Mr. Rosendahl? Come on down and enjoy. This is a free, again, spay and neuter. People are invited to come out, and that famous dog trainer will be there, Caesar Milan. Come on out and enjoy, 9 to 12, free spay and neuter for your animals, Saturday. Thank you.
Thank you. Any announcements, council members? Seeing none? Oh, yes, Councilman Buscaino.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Tomorrow's gonna be an exciting day, colleagues, for the Harbor Gateway South community. We'll be breaking ground for the Harbor Gateway South's first park that's ever been built. And we're working with Rettin Parks Department, really, much thanks to Janet Shower and the Mary Ann Cypher's Group. Tomorrow, we'll be breaking ground at the Pocket Park there, at the corner of Danker and 208th Street, at 11:30, followed by a community concert that's gonna involve a number of musical acts from a number of organizations and community-based organizations and schools in the Harbor Gateway South community. And I'd like to thank this body for supporting this Pocket Park. We completely owe it to the residents of Harbor Gateway South, and it's gonna be a great day in Harbor Gateway tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you. Any announcements? Seeing none? Adjourning motions? Councilman Rosendahl?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Joining me today are two people from Venice, actually, three. And I'd like Sylvia and Mika and the president of the neighborhood council, Indalux, to stand up. We had a sudden death in my district the other day, and it's just, again, we emphasize this to me, that all we have is the moment. Colleagues, we're adjourning in memory of Jeffrey Valjon Cook. Jeff passed away peacefully on January 28, 2013, at his home in Marina Del Rey. He was 57 years old. Jeff was born on May 8, 1955, in Easterville, Iowa. When he turned 10 years old, Jeff and his family moved to and settled in Plainview, Texas. Jeff had a brilliant mind and graduated with honors from Plainview High School in 1973, graduated cum laude from Rice University in 1977, and earned his master's degree from UCLA in 1981. For many years, he worked in Los Angeles as a computer scientist, eventually attaining the position of Director of Internal Research and Development for a computer research laboratory. In 2003, Jeff went into business with his wife Sylvia and worked as a self-employed real estate investors and developers. Despite all his educational professional success, Jeff always touted his greatest joy and accomplishment to be his daughter, Mika. He's survived by his wife and business partner, Sylvia, daughter, Mika, parents, VG Cook, and Pat Jones, sisters, Julia, Michelle, and Valerie, as well as eight nieces and nephews. Jeff was known for all of his warmth, big heart, and generous man. He was a compassionate soul that was taken away from us much too early, and all of the Venice community is mourning in his memory. May he rest in peace. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Zine?
Thank you. I have two adjourning motions. The first is for Ursula, known as Jackie McGill. Born April 14, 1930, passed away February 3, 2013. Passed away peacefully at her home on February 3, Woodland Hills, after a hard-fought battle with cancer preceded in death by her husband, Robert, in 2009. Jackie was born Munich, Germany, where she met and married Bob in 1953. Resided in San Fernando Valley since 1957. A loving wife, devoted mother, especially enjoyed gardening, was active in the Woodland Hills Republican Women's Club. Survived by her son, Richard, daughter Linda, eight grandchildren, three great-grandchildren. She will be missed by all who loved her. She is now with peace with God. Private Family Services held Oakwood Memorial Park Cemetery in Chatsworth. I knew Jackie, and she was a dynamite lady. I used to love to call her Ursula, because she didn't like the name Ursula, which I thought was a very, very nice name, but just a very, very sweet member of the community for many, many years. May she rest in peace. Jackie McGill. My other adjourning motion for Robert "Bob" Bonadieu. Passed away January 19. Colonel, United States Marine Corps, retired. Marietta, California, tireless advocate for American veterans, especially the American POWs of Japan. Passed away in January 19, surrounded by his family after an extended illness. He was 83 years of age. Born in New York, December 27, 1929, the parents Frank and Rose. 1948, he enlisted in the Marine Corps. 1949, the Marine Corps sent him to Subig Bay, Philippines. 50, 1950, he went to Korea, where he served in combat with the 2nd Battalion, 7th Marines, 1st Marine Division. Participated in Cho Sing Reservoir Breakout in Korea, forever linking him to an elite group of soldiers called the Chosen Few. In late 1953, assigned to Camp Pendleton with the MP Battalion, later as an infantry company commander. In 1954, assigned to the Marine Corps Air Station in El Toro, California. Served as the Assistant Personnel Officer and Atomic Biological and Chemical Defense Officer. Participated in the last atomic blast, United States, Desert Rock, Nevada. Commanded the only Marine Corps Reserve Artillery Regiment, United States. Retired from the Marine Corps after 42 years of dedicated service. In civilian life, was advertising and marketing manager at Pacific Valley of California and Nevada, retiring after 26 years. Continued working as a consultant and even traveled to Seoul, Korea, South Korea, where he was contracted, put together Yellow Pages for the city of Seoul, which flourishes today. Devoted to helping veterans find jobs. Co-authored the Jobs Partner Training Act of 1982, which gave jobs to unemployed veterans and minorities. Was an inspiring advocate for the American POWs in the Pacific, who suffered horribly in Japan slave labor camps. His last campaign was trying to persuade Congress to provide compensation to American POWs of Japan for their inhumane imprisonment. He is beloved daughters Karen and Jean, advocate to an end, the exhibiting of elephant suffering and confinement in zoos across America, and those forced into a lifetime of misery in the circus. Those who knew Bob would say he was relentless as a man who never gave up on any mission when it came to helping others. His love of his family, the Marine Corps, and America was evident in the way he lived his life and in the character of who he was as a man. Memorial being planned at Camp Pendleton. He will be buried at Arlington National Cemetery. Survived by his wife Claire, 62 years, and daughters Jean and Karen. May he rest in peace. That is Colonel Bob Bonadieu. Thank you.
Councilman Corretts?
Thank you. Colleagues, I'd like to adjourn in memory of my favorite professor at UCLA, Paul Tanner, who you may have read about in The Times. He died at age 95, and he was a trombonist in the Glenn Miller Band and an amazing jazz man, but more notably, he was an amazing professor. He taught music at UCLA for 23 years, but he taught a wonderful class, two-quarter class on the history of jazz. And not only was it amazing to hear this from one of the great players himself, but any of the great jazz musicians who were still alive in the '70s, most of them made their way to this class and would either speak to us or play for us, and it was an amazing opportunity. And he was just a hell of a nice guy and a wonderful professor. Interestingly enough, which I didn't know until I read his obituary, if you remember the Beach Boys song, "Good Vibrations," there was a strange, kind of an eerie instrument, which he apparently invented, called the electrotheremin, and that was used on that and a couple of other Beach Boys records. If you go back and listen for that, you'll definitely know which one it was. So, an interesting keyboard instrument as well. He was a great musician and a great human being, and sorry for his passage. He is survived by his wife, Jan Tanner, and two stepsons. And he will be warmly remembered by, certainly by anyone that ever took the history of jazz at UCLA.
Thank you, Councilman Corretts. Any adjourning motions? Councilman Alarcon?
Yes, members, I'd like to adjourn in the memory of Jeannie Rowe, who was an activist in the Silmar area for as long as I can remember. She was born November 8, 1925, and attended Leavenwood High School, where she was a drum majorette. Her friends fondly named her Peanut, which was given to her for her stature. After high school, Jeannie continued her education and graduated from UCLA. She had two biological children, Patty Jetho and Michael Murphy, and then added eight stepchildren to the family when she married Charles Chuck Rowe. She was a proud grandmother of 26 grandchildren and great-grandmother of eight. Jeannie's interests varied, but her biggest passion was NASCAR. I never knew that, but I guess she was really into Jimmy Johnson. For several years, she would take her son and grandsons to Fontana when the circuit came to Southern California. And she had posters of Jimmy Johnson displayed above the couch in her happy room that she would look at while she was reading a book. And one time, she even rode in one of the cars. She asked the driver, when it was over, if she could go again. She showed no fear. When it came to daring activities, she and her husband enjoyed riding hogs. And each time, she would go to the Officer of the Quarter Ceremony at Galpin Mortars, she would ask if there were any ways she could ride the mint-green motorcycle that was on display. Her passion for NASCAR was surpassed only by her desire to participate in organizations and activities that would benefit local youth, civic, and community groups, and those projects that would help preserve the community of Silmar. She served in many elected positions, as well as serving as president in the following organizations: San Fernando Emblem Club, the Silmar Chamber of Commerce, Silmar Women's Club, Mission Community Police Council. She was on the board of the Silmar Neighborhood Council, and she received the very first lifetime membership from Mission College Foundation. She was also a member of the Silmar Kiwanis Club, the Optimus Club, the PTA, and many more organizations. She was an avid supporter of the Boys and Girls Club, Silmar Relay for Life, Narcanon, Race for Life, and other community groups. Jeannie was recognized by local and state elected officials for her years of service and commitment to the community. She was official, she was the official ambassador to the 2012 Silmar Parade, and she loved parades and faithfully attended the San Fernando Valley Veterans Day Parade each year. She was looking forward to her 51st taxed year. Her business, Row Accounting Services, was well-established, and several of her clients came out of state each year to take care of business and then share stories about family, pets, health, and of course, NASCAR. She passed away on February 3 at the age of 87. In her typical style, she waited until the Super Bowl ended before taking her last breath. She will be missed by many. Her dedication to Silmar and the ideals that she instilled regarding community participation will live on. Jeannie's favorite color was pink, and after her services, her celebration of life was themed the Pretty in Pink Party. You know, I knew Jeannie to be everywhere. I think I gave her as many awards as any elected official over my 20 years in office. She was everywhere, and you never knew where she was going to be, but you knew that if you were in Silmar, she probably had a hand in whatever you were there to do. So she's a great representative model for people in the United States to contribute to our democracy by getting involved in your community. And I can think of very few people who were as active as her in the Silmar community. She had her services this morning at the First Baptist Church of San Fernando, and she's survived by her biological children, Patty Jetho and Michael Murphy, her eight stepchildren, 26 grandchildren, eight grandchildren, including Cindy Pavio, Pavao, excuse me, Carrie Allen, Carol Jean Schmidt-Jones, Brian Schmidt, Charlene Rowe, John Rowe, and James Allen.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other adjourning motions? Councilman Rosendahl?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I want to adjourn in memory of the three people that have just been killed and hope that there's no more violence going forward. And may those three who have been killed rest in peace.
Thank you, Councilmember. Seeing other adjourning motions? This means adjourn. Have a great and healthy weekend. Thank you.